Pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. All traces to the agenda?
Chair, make the motion to add an agenda item to discuss the failure of the two bonding resolutions at the October 17th meeting.
Someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? So I'm going to address that in my comments. Apparently every, I, I'm going to address that. Doesn't require an executive session or anything of that nature. It's, that's too political, but I'll address it from a Board of Ed point of view. So I will address it in my comments. Is that all right?
Do we have, do I have this on the agenda or are you saying that you will, you will address it in your comments? And if anyone asks us to say something, we should make it into comments?
So we're kind of going out of the realm of Board of Education meeting. This is a political item that you want to talk about. I'm willing to talk about the no vote, why it happened, and the effect of the school. That I'm willing to talk about. Anything beyond that is inappropriate for a Board of Ed meeting. So if your intention is to talk about the no vote and why it failed, and the effect it has on the Board, that's fine. Anything beyond that is out of scope of a Board of Ed meeting.
I think that we have a real issue that we need to address at the Board of Ed.
I, I'm not going to allow it. We don't have a real issue. And, so that's my discussion. Any further discussion? Okay. She wants to add an item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say opposed, opposed, opposed. So let's do a roll call then. So it's two to two.
Did you read the motion?
What should I add?
Um, I propose to add an agenda item to discuss the failure of the two bonding resolutions at the October 17th meeting. Now, that's the discussion, is the word you're asking to be added? Yes, in all, you know, all, in my opinion.
They can't hear with the phone. Hang on a second. Say again, please?
Yes, I mean, I, I wasn't going to limit, limit the discussion to...
It's inappropriate to assess politics at Board of Ed meeting. That will not happen in this Board of Ed. If you want to have a discussion about the political side and the vote, that's another time and another place, but not in here. What facts would you like to discuss? Because if it has anything to do with politics, I will not allow it.
I mean, you're all a different party. I am confused as to who, I can tell you specifically what my issue is if you want to, want me to say right now.
Yeah, I'll allow it. Sure.
We had three items up for bonding, which I am assuming that we all supported. You as chair worked with the previous superintendent and manager to put those three items up for bonding, and they were all, you know, I will take home as an item, and assume that you supported it. And yet, your name was on a sign that said, "Vote no," instructing the members of the public to vote no. It's, it's...
So you're misconstruing, and this is a problem, and I'm not going to allow you to continue this, all right? So we're going to have a public service announcement, and we're going to get this done because I'm tired of this crap. There are two parties in this town. There's Republican Party and the Democratic Party. The town committees. I sit as the elected treasurer of the Republican Town Committee. I'm going to say this to get this done. I've been following this school for 24 years. Nobody advocates more for anything. And everybody in here knows that, most, most, most likely like Joe and Bob Mitchell. My name on a bottom of a sign put out by a Republican Town Committee is no indication of my expression of the vote. Hang on, let me finish. So I call the S E E C, which is the State Education Enforcement Commission. To get some clarity, because some signs have their treasures on, some don't. If you are handing out a leaflet or something comes in the mail, the State Education, or excuse me, Election Enforcement Commission requires the treasurer's name to be on the bottom of that advertisement. If it's a sign, it has to be 32 square feet. That's a four by eight. So some signs have them, some signs don't. So because my name's on the bottom does not mean I voted no. It does not mean I supported no. And I didn't get, and that's not my call. That's the Republican Town Committee's chair decision to put my name on the bottom of the sign. Now, have I aired that out?
Can I say something?
Yes.
I, I needed you to say that. But my understanding is, in the state of Connecticut, signs smaller than the 32 square feet do not need attribution. Your name did not be, need to be on there, and I, I, I called you up after the first vote, because we had a second vote coming up. And I, I believe I requested or recommended that you either take your name off those signs or make sure those signs were not at the polling place for the second election because it is, it's confusing to the public when the chair of the Board of Ed has their name on a big sign that votes no. And it's, you know, it's discouraging to the, to the board members. And we needed, we needed to talk about this publicly. And that's what I was going to ask you, was to please clarify, did you support that or not? But I think the voters needed to know that as well as us.
Well, for the record, you're the only person who's asked me. And did I support our projects? Of course I did. Of course I did. But my name on the bottom of a sign is no indication of, of vote no. And I don't control that.
I, I believe it's a conflict of interest for you to come out for something, and also against it. It would not happen to me. I wouldn't have the choice. But that's the second and the final part I wanted to bring up. Because I believe it's a conflict of interest, and I think you should make a decision which side of the issue you're going to be on, and make, make a clear statement and try your best to make sure that, that people perceive that you are on one side of an issue and toward the other. And as a Board of Ed member, you know, I, I really need you as a chair to come out and say that you are, you know, supporting something that, you know, the Board of Ed is trying to accomplish. You, you need to say that and make that clear to all the voters, as well as the Board of Ed members. And this ambiguity, I, I don't think is, you know, it, it causes board members, you know, to lack confidence that you're not going to do this again because you've just excused doing it. So is this going to happen again? Are we going to decide to, to go forward with something, and then your name is going to be on a, you know, an opposition? And, and I understand opposition. I don't have a problem with opposition, but I think it's a conflict of interest for you to be on both sides, for and against. And I think that's a problem for you as a chair.
Clarity. I don't know where you're coming from. My name's on America's on the treasurer. I report to the state of Connecticut for a nonprofit called Republican Town Committee. In no other capacity is my name on the sign. No other capacity. It's not an indication of how I feel or how I vote. I don't know why you're driving down this road so hard because you're the only person who has said something. And if nobody else has the guts or the decency to call me, then shame on them. But I'm going to tell you right now, I didn't put my name on that sign. Tom McNally did. And this is very political, and you should know this with your husband as chair of the town council. You should know this is very political. I voted for our projects. We're done with the conversation. Okay?
I have more to say about it. You know, if you allow, you, you didn't stand up during the town meeting and speak out in favor of our bonding resolutions, and I've seen you do that in the past. And I, I didn't...
You're implying that I don't. Does a single Democrat get up and talk? Let's talk now. Let's just throw it out there. You're making this 100% political, and you're dead wrong at a Board of Ed meeting.
I am not making it political if there was...
You are!
If there was a conflict...
I, I don't agree. I don't think she is. She's asking questions.
My name's on a sign by virtue of my mission.
I understand, Will. She's asking you questions.
What would you like me to do? Put it in the day paper? I don't know!
Did you, I mean, it happened not just once, but after we talked, and I specifically said, I think that you should not have those signs up there.
I don't control those signs. The Republican Town Committee chair does, Tom McNally. I don't control them.
How's this resign from...
Is there a reason that you're starting to get physically like, don't, don't?
Because we're ruining a meeting because this is all driving politics for some unknown reason tonight.
It's, it's not politics. I, I want the money for that wall to move.
And it didn't pass.
It, it didn't pass, but this did not help, and it also...
So you blamed it me?
She's asking you...
I'm saying you have a conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest. I support the project.
I disagree when your name is on a sign that says vote no, and you have no control over it. I, I mean, it's not for me to tell you what to do, but I mean, if it were me, I would, you know, resign as treasurer, whatever you have to do to get your name off that sign if you truly believe that the Board of Ed is, you know, deserving of support. You have, as the Board of Ed, you have a big influence on what people think. And I, I'm not just, you know, I didn't expect it. I was blindsided. I really was. Because you stand up here and you say that there's no politics here, that we're all on the same side, we all support the school. And as, as I said, that's, that's the way I view it. If there was a sign with your name on it saying vote no, even after, even after we spoke, and I made clear to you that that, that was how, that was, that's the optics. I don't think it's just me.
Erica, we're in discussion phase. Go ahead.
I know that, and I apologize first for being late first. I want to first say that Bonnie's not alone in her concern. I did not call you. I became aware of it a few days after the election when I saw comments on the day and I went looking. I just think it merits the conversation, you know, Will. I've heard you say many times in here that one of the things you appreciate greatly about this board is that politics don't seem to play in, and...
I do appreciate it.
I think it's just, it merits conversation because it does look like, from where we were standing, where I stand, when I look at it, it does look like you're saying one thing and doing another. And it just looks that way. You know, Bonnie just said it's the optics. It looks one way, and it, I think we just wanted to get some clarity because you have so often said that one of the things you appreciate is that politics don't come into it, and then to see your name on a sign that says vote no at a referendum for something that in this room you've said you supported, it just, those two things crashed into each other, and it undermines, I think, the ability of this board to work collaboratively, trustfully with each other. It just needs, the conversation needs to be had, whether it's family, or a board, or a boardroom. These things happen, and they just need to be dealt with and aired and cleaned up.
Thank you. Carol?
I, I am, I was also pretty much gobsmacked when I saw those signs. And I realize that you, you know, in your position as treasurer, as you say, you didn't put the sign together. But I really agree that this is a conversation that we as a Board of Ed need to have because I have felt and very much aligned with what you have consistently said here at our board, that, you know, this is not a, a political group, that we don't have these kinds of upsets, and we don't get into our silos, and we do what is best for the kids, what is best for our schools. And when this happened, and it wasn't just, you know, my perception as a prickly Democrat, when I looked at the day paper article, there were comments in there about how it looked. And I, and I was like, well, what do we do? You know, and the first thing I thought is, well, we should all get together outside of a Board of Ed meeting and have a conversation. But then I ran up in my head with the problem that if we all get together outside of a Board of Ed meeting to have a conversation, that is a Board of Ed meeting. And you can, and we are constrained from being able to do things that way. And so the only venue to, where we could have a conversation, as uncomfortable as, as the conversation is, is this venue. It's the only place we can have. And the reason to have it is because I want to very much preserve what I believe that we have had and what we want to have going forward, which is a group that works together for the best of our schools.
Well?
I didn't see the signs, so I didn't know there was any controversy on it. And most of the time, after the articles, everyone don't read the day. So I didn't see any of that. I understand what it is because I, I know what that law is. And it's a standard line that can be put on the signs. And I've done signs, and if you're making a big sign or a little sign, lots of times it's cheaper just to shrink it. So that's how somebody's name could end up on a smaller sign. It's because, you know, you send it out to the printer and say, I'll need two of these at 34 square feet, and I need 10, you know, the 20 by 18ths. And they'll just shrink it down because everybody can Photoshop now. So that's how I can see that that happened, the requirement of his name and position being put on the sign. Because, you know, the treasurer's name always has to be on any of the political items or correspondence. So I can understand how it happened. And again, the discussion that we're having is not really raw. Let's get it out in the open. Let's talk about it, end it, and move on and do the work that we're here to do for each other.
Tina?
I, I saw the signs. I didn't see any names on the bottom. And I know, being part of the RTC, that a vote was made to make those signs. Most of the members weren't even there to vote on that. So I don't, I didn't, I didn't even know his name was on there. So it's kind of a question of, some people knew it, most people didn't. So I, I don't know if it's a conversation that's worth holding up this meeting for, but you know, if you find it's important, then I do too.
I can tell you, the chairman, the vice chairman, the secretary and I talked, and I was the only one who voted no for the sign. I voted no for the sign.
Thank you.
Probably should have said that 20 minutes ago. You're welcome. Tim?
I can honestly say I know where you stand as far as treasurer because I sit on that side of the Democrats. And just because the name is there doesn't mean you support the sign, or the person, or whatever. The only observation I do have, though, is 99.99% of the time, when we're going for money, you always have a statement to make. And unfortunately, that night, the only one that made a statement was Tom McNally to vote no on all five items.
Donna?
Well, I, I think, Will, as you were putting between a rock and a hard place, I think you were, and I think your original comment where the discussion should have happened during your remarks is a better idea. So I suggest we get on and have a meeting.
Are we all set?
Yeah.
I appreciate the public and administration's patience on this. Difficult discussion, but a discussion had to be had. I assure you, my allegiance is to school district. It's intact, as it has been for 24 years.
Yes?
Bonnie, would you consider withdrawing your motion now that we've had the discussion?
Yes.
And as the second, I'll withdraw the motion. I second.
Any discussion?
We've no hold of stuff.
All right. Okay. Citizens' comments regarding agenda items only. Citizens' comments regarding, regarding agenda items only. One more time. Citizens' comments regarding agenda items only. Hearing none. Letters accommodations?
I have none.
Thank you. Best part of the evening. Presentation, Moffel Marvles.
And we will start with letter tile.
All right. Bring some letter here. Kate, come on up. Mr. Scilio's advisor. We've got a great presentation for you guys tonight.
We need a little Natalie in our lives.
Wow.
So we have Mr. Scilio here and her amazing advisory. So tonight's presentation is kind of twofold. We wanted to tell you about a really unique learning experience that Mr. Scilio organized with our students where we adopted a cow out of Ellington. Her name is Ellie. Ellie was a calf when we adopted her, and she was 82 pounds when she was born. But after a month, she's up to 180 pounds. So this is a great sign for our eighth grade picnic at the end of the year. I think we're going to have a big... We're not going to eat the cow. We're not going to, we're not going to eat the cow. So just a little levy. We, but, but we are, this is a really unique learning experience where it becomes virtual, and the kids get to interact with the farmer who takes care of the cow, see the cow grow. So we've adopted, in a sense, to learn about the animal and watch it grow, to just gain that experience. So it's just a great outreach for our students. And it's something that's outside of the box, that kind of brings them together and connects with an aspect like farming that maybe they haven't thought of before, or maybe they do have some experience about. But the second part of this being a marvel is that we are in year three of this advisory program, and Mr. Scilio and these guys have been together now, this is their third year. So they started as sixth graders all together. And then on the back of this board is our description of what our advisory program is all about and why it's important. And they meet bi-monthly, two times a month, and we talk about a lot of different things. We have a curriculum that's filed about different social, emotional pieces. But the real piece of it is that these guys have really been linked together. Some of them came to Tile. They weren't friends. They come from different schools. They meet each other, and they become a close-knit group with Mr. Scilio, who does an amazing job of them. So between this unique learning experience and then bringing them together, we thought it was a great time to recognize what has the power of our advisory program. And Ellie, if you guys see, is just a gorgeous-looking calf. Beautiful. So we do want to, you know, possibly do some type of field trip or interaction to these guys who meet this Ellie. But did you guys have anything that you wanted to add? No, where are you going?
Me?
Yeah. Talking about advisory. How great is advisory?
Amazing.
See? But it's, it's been a really good experience. Miss Dean, do you have anything that you want to add? No?
It's a breakup, and it's good times.
They're a great group of kids. So for, for that, for their work with the outreach program, a new learning experience, and then overall representing our advisory program, Moffel Marvles for tonight. So great job, guys. Great job, guys. Thank you, guys.
You know, Palmer campus, please.
Sure.
James Clark, come on down, please. Jason Clark?
So James is our first of two marvles that the Palmer School is going to give out tonight. This is James Clark. Really pleased to introduce everybody to James. James started with us in the Moffel Public Schools about a year ago, September 20th of 2023, as our part-time custodian. Tonight, he's being honored for several major contributions that he's made to our school community. James takes incredible pride in his job as our custodian. It was never more apparent this summer than when, with the incredible work he did in the summer months to get our school ready to be in tip-top condition for the start of the school year. I can honestly tell this crowd that in, in the 20-plus years that I've been in Moffel, I have never heard so many positive comments about how our buildings look, the condition, and the appearance. And it's all credit to this man's hard work. It goes well above and beyond that, though. He, he's really become a valuable member of our community. He's dope, and he doesn't, I should clarify, James does it, he works four to eight. Right? So he's not there when, like, the kids are in session, like, in other, in other schools. But yet, he's become a very valuable part of our school community. He's donated all of his returnable bottles since he started. So our recycle bin asked what that was about, and now he brings in all of his bottles to donate to the school. Didn't stop there with, with his donations. He noticed one day, we have a KitchenAid mixer, and he noticed there was a part that was, that wasn't there. Brought it in the next day and donated it to the school. Just want to get a few laughs, because he also recognized that Holly, our school therapy dog, had certain needs as well. So he brought in a nice bag of dog wastebag. Holly taking care of his, his kindness goes, his kindness goes on and on and on. But then he also, we had School Spirit Week earlier this year, and again, he doesn't, he doesn't come in until 4 o'clock. But he saw the signs, and he came to me and said, what, what's that about? What can I do to support the school? And he came in every day of Spirit Week in time, right before the kids were leaving. And so the kids and staff could see him right at the end of the day. Couple of my favorites were his silk pajamas. On Pajama Day. And his very good impersonation of Run DMC on Decades Day. So James, with all that, it's a great pleasure to honor you as our Moffel Marvel for your dedication to our former building and being a positive member of our school community. Thank you so much. All right, so come on up now. Come on up, so. So I'm really thrilled to introduce Sophia Delcotta to this group. Honestly, there's been, so start, she's a junior now. She started with us as a, as a freshman. You'll hear a little bit more about it in a second, but there's been many Moffel Marvel times where I've wanted to bring her to the board and just, maybe a senior or, you know, somebody else has some Moffel Marvel right over there. Nick last year was represented. There was always just some other student who I, who would bring together. So I'm really thrilled that tonight's her night. And so so's being, being recognized for two different things. One, her amazing self-advocacy skills, and as well as her, her academic excellence. We'll start with some examples of her self-advocacy skills. When she was in Tile Middle School and planning to go to high school, she was actually recommended to start at Moffel High School. She talked to her dad in the summertime, felt like Moffel High School might be a little overwhelming to her, maybe just, just a little too much. So she convinced her dad to call a PPT meeting, discuss her least restrictive environment, and the team decided Palmer was probably her least restrictive environment. But all because of her advocacy skills. Sophomore year, she decided that she wanted to get outside counseling involved in her life. So she talked to her dad again. Believe nine, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, nine phone calls to UCFS, but finally got UCFS services involved and, and, and it's made a huge difference for Sophia, but her persistence and her willingness to advocate for things she needed. And now this school year, maybe the most amazing thing, is she's decided she wants to experience all that Mr. Alz's team has to offer at Moffel High School. So she put together a really strong case. We called a PPT and we, and we discussed her plan. And starting semester two, she will become a full-time student up here at Moffel High School. So all, some terrific self-advocacy skills she's demonstrated. She's also been incredibly committed to her, her academic success. And so now this is the audience participation part. Ms. Lammer, I'm going to ask you first to open up your folder and read the number you see inside there.
96.
96. That was Sophia's final grade in English last school year. All right, Ms. Lam, which number you got?
97.
That was Sophia's final grade in contemporary issues last school year. Final grade for the whole school year. Stombeck?
99.
That was Sophia's grade in environmental science and her internship grade. And Mr. Pike, I think you can know what to do. A 100. Four classes for the year in US History II, Statistics, PE, and Spanish I. And that's a really true reflection of just how hard she's worked and, you know, sample teachers redone work to, you know, to be, to be the best version of herself. So really, really pleased to recognize you, Sophia, as a Moffel Marvel for your academic excellence and your self-advocacy skills. Congratulations.
Moffel High School, please.
All right, I have two marbles also tonight. I'm going to start with Kathy McCree. Come on up. All right, Kathy has served as a school counselor for over 24 years here at Moffel High School. As a steadfast advocate for students, Kathy's unwavering compassion and commitment have made her an invaluable part of our community. Through her tireless efforts, her, she has guided countless students through challenges, ensuring they feel supported and valued at all times. Her legacy of excellence and her impact on generations of students exemplify the very best of Moffel High School. It is with a heavy heart that I share that Kathy is retiring from Moffel High School in January. Her contributions to our community have been immeasurable, and her absence will be felt deeply. Finding someone with her level of dedication and expertise will not be an easy task. Kathy, for everything you do, thank you and congratulations. I would now like to bring up Ava Gere, who's also one of Kathy's students. Ava Gere, a new sophomore, has made an extraordinary impact in a very short amount of time here at Moffel High School. Despite navigating her own challenges while adjusting to a new school environment, she has gone above and beyond to support her peers. Ava exemplifies the way of the wolf mentality by consistently showing kindness and compassion. She has worked with students also struggling with transition to Moffel High School, often putting their needs ahead of her own. Additionally, Ava has formed a meaningful connection with one of our special education students by sitting with him during lunch and offering companionship. She has even offered to volunteer to assist the parent educator that also sits with them by providing her support with this student during that time. There was one situation where the parent educator needed to use the restroom, and she said, don't worry, I got this, to sit with the student, which was remarkable. Ava's empathy, resilience, and dedication truly enriches our school, school community, making a shining example of what it means to support and uplift others. On top of that, she has excelled academically here in the first quarter. All As with one B+. Ava, congratulations, and thank you for all you do to make Moffel High School a better place.
All right, the next presentation will be given by Dr. Bumpack.
I would like to call up Barbara Lockhart. I am very excited to present my first award, the Community Support Award, to Barbara Lockhart. Barbara was one of the first community members I met, and I was immediately impressed with her passion for our students, her commitment to this community, and her eagerness to support the school system as a whole. She has supported us with many resources, funding, and training. For example, our athletic coaches, our social workers, our school psychologists, guidance counselors, and administrators have all been trained in Narcan and suicide prevention. She brought that training to us. Barbara allocated funding to support the Project Courage, an agency that supports us through student support counselors for students dealing with addiction with themselves or their family members and mental health concerns. And this year, Barbara has provided us with two social workers to support both Tile and Palmer. You have always supported us, and she has brought to us training for our students, for our parents, and for our faculty and staff. You are an awesome community partner, and I'm honored to present to Barbara this plaque to represent our appreciation and gratitude for your dedication and friendship.
I just wanted to take one quick moment to acknowledge all the other people. Meeting Diane for the first time, Dr. Bumpack, who has a doctorate in restorative justice, was huge for me because that is a true passion of mine. I do a lot of juvenile diversion work in the community as well. So I was excited when she came on board. My relationship with a lot of people in this room, I'm looking at principals, administrators, there's board members, there's the chair, the mayor is here, Councilman Jask was, Councilman Southern. It's just so many people, and of course, I will not forget my crew in the back, my coworkers. I said to Diane, when she told me about this award, I said, it's really a team effort. It's not just about me. My crew is amazing. I have board members sitting back there recording and, and came out to support me. And the guy way back in the corner is my husband, and you can't really do anything without that person who, you know, stays up late and accepts the traffic to go to meetings and all the things. So I share this award with all my staff and all the people who I love, touched my life over the years in this town. 20th year started on Monday, so hoping, hoping to hang on just a little bit longer.
I do want to take a moment to introduce to the board and everybody here, Callie Carbalo, if she can stand up. She is our VCBA, Board Certified Behavioral Analyst. Oh, I got it. And she has been a tremendous asset to the community already. So I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to see her. She will be presenting to us at some time. Maybe we could get her to even do some training with us.
That concludes our Moffel Marbles. You're all welcome to stay for our meeting.
Well, it doesn't work, Andrea will tour the facilities for each slide.
It will work. It will. They only told me one thing to do, but this is not the thing. Let me just try that. Rob, do you know what this is supposed to do? Do you know what it's supposed to do?
I have not used it in that capacity. I've used it from the plug-in capacity.
First assessment.
All right, your next item will be report on district assessment data.
Okay, so we are going to give you a overview of the assessments that our students took. Keep in mind that most of these details are from the assessments students took last year in the spring. I wanted to begin by giving you just a brief overview on some data. Here's an example of the percentage of students eligible for free and reduced price meals. Keep in mind, during COVID, all students received meals, so you see a dip there. But we are definitely experiencing more students in our district receiving or eligible for free and reduced meals than the state average. As a reminder, we often look at that state benchmark as a measure. We always want to, with our scores, perform better than the state. And this is just an example of the need in our community. We've done a lot of conversation regarding special education. This is just the trend upward of students in our district that are identified as special education students. And this also is a number that is higher than the state average. Our L students, while that number has flatlined in, in terms of the number of students learning English as they come into our community, it's important to note that the need has increased greatly. If you remember, last year, we talked about, we had two or three students that came in that were classified as slight students, meaning that their students were limited for interrupted formal education. So they're coming from, to us where they may not have attended formal education for several years. Compounding that would be that they do not have the acquisition of the English language. So it's a lot of work to the needs. While that number is staying relatively the same, slight uptick, but you can't really tell on that side, the needs for these students are definitely more complex than in the past. We're really excited about our data around chronically absent students. You have heard our principals mention this in some of their presentations. We are definitely doing better than the state average and, you know, we're just really excited. We looked at this data even as it represents, as we're doing in communities like us, and we are doing phenomenal. So kudos to the principals and their teams for their hard work. We are now going to talk about elementary data, and Andrea will talk about details.
So the first assessment that I'm going to discuss is our DIBLES data, and that stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Early Literacy Success. So this assessment is our universal screening tool that is given to all K-8 students. The purpose of this assessment is to identify students maybe in need of more intensive literacy instruction. And so this tool measures six foundational literacy skills, beginning with letter identification all the way through comprehension. This, altogether, for K-8, we have critical data, but this is most critical data for our youngest students. So in the next couple of slides, you're going to see our students who took the screener in the fall. The students came in one of four categories. Our red and yellow bands are students who are below proficiency, and our green and blue bands are students that are above or at proficiency. Students in red, of course, need our most swift action. This slide here is our K-2 students, and as you can see for the fall benchmark, there is the most critical need in our K-2 band. So this is typical, not only due to the fact that these students are gaining many of the reading skills quickly. They are young, and quickly and furiously, they are gaining these skills. And also, our kindergarten students have never been exposed to this assessment, and also many of the skills on the assessment. So this, the red being large and, and bigger in these slides, is quite difficult. As the students are exposed to the foundational skills over extended periods of time, the hope that the red band diminishes. And as you can see, that has started in our grades during fourth. Grade five has slight uptick in our red band. That can be due to a couple of reasons. Grade five, the main measure is comprehension, whereas in the other grade levels, it's, it's all the other skills. And the text becomes quite difficult. So we are going to be looking into our skills, into our fifth grade, and, and monitoring that. But as you can see, in third and fourth grade, those skills start leveling out, and our numbers decrease in the red and the yellow. This slide shows our students from last fall to this fall as a cohort analysis. So the bars show the same exact students from last student, from last year when they entered this year. For the most part, our students are performing at the same levels or higher on these subtests for their grade levels as they were the previous years. So they're maintaining their skills at the beginning of the year. They're ready to test, they're ready to start as, in, in their next grade level. This slide is simple, simply to indicate that sometimes we have what's called summer slide. And so this is a cohort analysis of our spring students moving into fall. So what they left with in the spring is our orange bars. And then what they came in when they were tested in the fall is our black band. And so you can see there's a little bit of inconsistency there, and some of that can be due to the loss of, of learning over the summer. So when they come in, they haven't retained all of those skills. So those are some things that we will again look at as a district, how to support students over the summer with that summer learning loss.
So the next several slides, I am going to show you the Smarter Balance assessment that was administered in the spring to all students grades three through eight. It can be very confusing when you look at some of this data as we're looking at achievement and growth. So I just wanted to preface that as we begin. After, I'm going to talk to you about achievement and growth with elementary. Then the principals are here to give some information to you as well and answer any questions you may have. And you can also stop me as we go along. So right here, this data, the first three columns are showing you the scores over a three-year band. So the, oftentimes, or the state really looks at the percent of students at or above proficiency. So when you see the color-coded charts, you're going to know that red and yellow are those students that are achieving below proficiency, and the blue and green are those students at or above proficiency. I'm sorry. And that was for ELA, and this one, again, is for grades three, three through eight, and it is for math. We're going to go into detail as we go along. But this allows you a snapshot to see for all grades that are taking the assessment and how we look at this in terms of how we target the support to the students. Because we have a need that is behind each and every one of those data points.
So it looks like middle schools, it looks like middle schools fairly, I don't want to use, I don't know what word I want to use here, uncertain compared to three, four, and five. Is there a particular reason why?
So, you know, one thing I could tell you is last year we did implement new curriculum. I'm assuming, you know, we may be talking about that in our presentation. So, you know, when you implement new curriculum, sometimes you will see a slight dip as it's new material that they're working through. Something we're even worried about as we start to work with CCLA, the new reading curriculum in elementary schools. So that could be one reason for that. Middle school nationally and at the state level typically sees a dip as well. So that could be, I just make sure I, okay. So here on the left, you're looking at the scores for grades three, four, and five in 2023. And to the right are grades three, four, and five in 2024. This is achievement. It's important to realize that we achieve with achievement data, it's a snapshot. It is testing the students on their knowledge, but it is one measure at one time. This is why we call it high stakes testing. Over fifty percent are proficient or better in both years. You can see that there are some concerns with fifth grade ELA in math as that red bar is higher than grades three and four. At the same time, this is a trend analysis. And we'll see other data that looks a little more encouraging for fifth grade. These are math, again, color-coded version in terms of the level where students are performing. Grades three and four have improved twenty-three to twenty-four. Again, grade five is a concern as our level one and two is increasing and our proficiency level is decreasing compared to other grades. When we're looking at achievement versus growth, I wanted to make you aware as we transition into some growth data that again, the achievement is that snapshot and measure of academic performance at that time that the students are taking the assessment. Growth is a change in achievement between one or more points for the same student. So growth data, when we look at accountability index, carries a little more weight than achievement. So in that map behind the scores that the state calculates for us, growth is a very important measure. So that's something I want you to keep in mind. Moving a student, no matter how much or how little, is very important versus that one test snapshot in time. I want to make sure there's a lot of slides here. Okay, so here you're looking at the percentage of students achieving their growth target. Every student gets a growth target. You either need it or you don't need it, yes or no. That's all that indicator is. So really, it's just a quick assessment to find out, did they achieve a very rigorous growth target? So we can see that we have been outperforming the state other than in twenty-two, twenty-three for grade four. For those of you that sat on the board during that twenty-two, twenty-three and we went through it, which is the overall question, we agree for there was something going on with grade four. But certainly we can see in terms of that growth that we are seeing that compared to the students. This is the matched approach, okay? This is really important and it allows us to quantify the amount of growth achieved by the same student. So here, we're taking the average of growth of all students. That previous was a indicator, did they meet their growth target or not? And this is an average of all the growth the students achieved, whether it was a lot or a little, whether they met their specific target or not. It's about movement. We want to see the students move. So based on scale score and credit for any kind of growth and we, other than that grade four, outperforming the state and significantly, which is where we get a little confused, a grade five. Percentage of students achieving the growth target. And math, again, this is, did they meet their growth target or not? And you can see that compared to the state for grade five, we are outperforming the state and grade four twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, this is the average of all students. And whether they achieved any growth is factored in here. And once again, we can see grade four in twenty-twenty-three struggled the most out of what we are showing in the last year. Okay, so this is the percentage of students at a level three. So remember, level three would be those students that are in the green and blue proficiency or higher. The meaning what we need them to meet to successfully move forward. You can see grade four in twenty-twenty-two was very close to the state and in all other areas, you know, Montville did outperform the state. Okay, same, same graph in, for math. You can see there's more variability in the way our students was performing compared to the state. But we outperformed the state in all areas in pretty much the same way. This is the science, NGSS. That is given in grade five, eight, and eleven. It's very, very rigorous assessment. And most of our students are falling into level three. But you can see that the students behind level three are performing in the level two area. With that said, we see that there was growth going from level, from the yellow level two, well, actually, I'm confusing that. But most students are meeting level three. At this point, we will ask Liz, Will, and Jill to talk about celebrations and next steps. And so any questions before we go?
All right, so for Mohegan last year, for ELA, all three grades taking the smarter balance assessment that I was just talking about improved on the previous year's scores with last year's fifth grade, which will be fourteen percentage points over the previous year. On the next generation accountability, which the smarter balance feeds into, where the schools get their overall score, technical report card for the school. All students demonstrated demonstrated days in growth at a rate of eleven point six percent higher than the previous year in ELA. In math, on the smarter balance, two of our three grades improved from previous year's percentage, students reaching levels three or four. And grade three was the only grade that took a slight step backwards from the previous year. Next generation accountability, that indicates overall growth of four point nine percent from the previous year. Science was the group showed our greatest amount of growth for the entire smarter balance at Okeechoban, improving over twenty percent from the previous year's scores. Some other areas that we're looking at, Diane touched on the L students. Our L students at Okeechoban continue to impress, improving their literacy skills by twenty-four percent from the previous year. Their oral skills also show great growth, including eleven point six. Although we are well above the state average in physical fitness, Mohegan will continue to work on that area with revised activities in PE, an after-school running club, and before-school sports program. Mohegan will also be working on improving chronic absenteeism. Also, we're better than the state average, but it's also an area that we need to improve on because we need kids in school in order to see, despite being well above the state average. The attendance committee is developing incentive programs that hopefully have students attend to. Questions?
So why didn't some of those grades really improve?
Good question. We.
What was the question, Donna?
Why did you improve? What's CCSE happening in the school that created you?
With the improvement across most areas, I think over the previous years, we had that complacent. And there was a renewed focus, renewed energy, the importance of, you know, focusing on, what needs to focus on, working with coaches, some of the help as well, developing programs to help target those students right at that level, where you're also level three.
At Oakdale, in the area of ELA, our cohort data for current sixth grade class shows three-year growth trend when you're looking at proficiency. They went from fifty-eight percent proficient to sixty-five percent proficient, seventy-one percent proficient. I'm going to just go over all the growth curves and I'll come back to some things that I want to work on. In math, our twenty-two, twenty-three, our fourth and fifth graders showed increased proficiency for a slight dip in our third grade class, performing at a lower proficiency rate than previous cohorts. And we had overall, this is not good in that regard. District-wide in science, we saw a slight upward trend in the scores on that NGSS, albeit a drop in aim to where we were on Oakdale in the eighteen, nineteenth school year, where we're performing at approximately the state average level. And one thing I was really thinking about a lot is why some of the areas that were, had difficulty in, at Oakdale in particular, and I talked to Bill, there's a little bit about just, a lot of news to happen with that. And I've talked a lot about that at the meetings. I think that we have some good teacher PD and training in place, but I think that needs to be a focus growth. We have wonderful mentors, but I think we just need to do things above and beyond team training. I think of the amazing PD we're getting in ELA this year in the program. For what is next year, when we get that teacher? How do they get that state record screen? So I think that's something we need to think about as a district. Also at Oakdale, like Will talked about, we want to continue to work on chronic absenteeism. Now, prior to the pandemic, Oakdale was always under five percent chronic absenteeism, which, yeah, reached that, which was pretty amazing. I never had to worry about absenteeism. I never had to put strategies in place. You know, we had a small group of kids that we had to work on. We went up to over fourteen percent chronic absenteeism at one point after the pandemic. We've come down to the ten percent range. And we want to keep working on that. There has been a real change in attitude about attendance. And so I think it's, especially at the elementary level, different than the secondary level. Like, how do we work with those families to get them to understand what's at school? It's a strange situation because I think since the pandemic, such people's priorities have changed. They're taking those vacations, they're, you know, keeping their kids out of school for extra days for fun. So we're kind of combating that right now. And also, we want to continue to look at physical fitness as well. We really put our effort into our physical fitness test a few years back and we, we saw a lot of growth and it's just kind of didn't begin. So I think that's just something that we need to work on together at the PD teachers. They are working on writing their curriculum right now. That is something that we all need to focus on.
Just to clarify, as you're chronic absenteeism is defined by eighteen days for ten percent of the school year being absent. I think that's a lot of days to happen.
So were they reaching a threshold of eighteen or is it significantly more?
There's a handful of kids that are significantly more. We really try to target those kids that are through those absences early on. They're trying to be with families who are socially aware of it.
That's a good segue I can take over. So something that does a blow for Murphy is our, we are actually combated it and had a pretty significant drop in the chronic absenteeism rate. We are operating at fifty-one point five percent above the state average, which is a good thing. You want to be, you want to have a lower percentage. And so I attribute that to, as a first-year principal, I kind of dove right in with chronic absenteeism. It was something that I felt like I could hear some advice from Diane, who has a background in that. And I immediately set up, that was sort of my first committee that I worked with, with my nurse and my social worker. And we met regularly and we targeted. So you were asking about like the percentage and how that works? Like if you're meeting regularly and you're, you're tracking those kids that are potentially going to be chronically absent and you're, you're having your social worker make those phone calls or you're having the teacher reach out. It definitely showed for us because that was something that we were proud of, having that drop. And I think that we can share that together as a team, like what worked at Murphy and, you know, together district-wide on that. So I wish I could say that I was excited, as excited about the ELA and math data. Unfortunately, we did see a drop in our scores in ELA and math at CEAM last year. The one that is, that it has me scratching my head the most and I've given a lot of thought to is our high-need student. And mostly because we were commended as a school of distinction for our high-need student's growth last year. And so I've been thinking a lot about it and I think one of the issues is exactly what Jill was talking about. We had three brand-new to Montville, one brand-new to teaching special education teachers last year, who worked tremendously hard. But we had one veteran special education teacher and they had a brand-new principal and they had, you know, like, so there was just, I think there was just, just over time, one of the teachers wasn't even in place right away at the beginning of the school year. So I definitely think that going into this year, we have a much more tight-knit, we're meeting regularly, we're talking about students specifically. We can look at which students didn't meet their growth targets and really target their instruction and that information. And we don't have, you know, they're, they're all in place and have that. So they, they're used to the Montville way. And so I definitely think that that will help us moving forward. We didn't drop significantly, but we either stayed very close to where we were last year or just had slight drops in our performance.
Do you see a third grade dip? Do you, as you, you see a third grade dip? Because I, you had to mention that you see a dip in third grade.
I saw, I didn't see a third grade specific dip. I saw a growth dip. Like, so the third graders, they don't get a growth score because they didn't take the test in second grade. The growth, you only get a growth score for your fourth and fifth graders because it tracks how they grew to last year.
Okay, do you do any cohort tracking? Because like the third graders on the chart that you had up there for third grade twenty-two, twenty-three, for fourth grade for twenty-three, twenty-four. And, you know, that's a piece of data that, you know, track. Because that actually shows, instead of comparing third grade this year to third grade last year, we should be really looking at third grade last year, fourth grade this year. And that way you can see how anything we're doing is going to show improvement, especially in the reading program. That's how we're going to see it, not comparing third grade to third grade. We'll be seeing those students as they move to elementary.
And that's what that growth score does for us as well, is it gives them, each individual student, a target that we're trying to get them to hit. And if they hit it, then we get that growth point. If they don't hit it, then it's a question of like, what are we doing differently for that one individual kid?
And I will say the coaches are phenomenal in working with us and helping us in everything we have to do.
in everything we have to do with the state. They gave our fourth and fifth grade teachers right away the data for the students they currently have. They gave the data for the students they have to be these years because they want them to reflect on their year. But right away, day one, these teachers had the data from the current, their current student test they took. So they're into their own money. I mean, they had those.
And one other thing that all three schools are incorporating this year more than ever is data teams. Once a week, the three little teams have to meet, discuss that, and what they can do to move students along.
So we think a real important thing, there's certain things that, you know, Andrea and I were like non-negotiables. These are the things that must happen, you know? So taking the, eh, should we, could we, will we? No, there are certain things that are really important that we're doing, including IAVs, looking at the results, sharing the results, conversations about the results. IAVs are interim assessment blocks that, focused IAVs, that allow them to practice with students on the standards, you know? It ensures we're aligning with the curriculum. But the real key to success is when we're diving deep into that data and we're not afraid, we're diving, again, a lot of this is how they did on that particular day, but looking at that growth, what does that student need to move forward? What is he struggling, he or she struggling on? Because we get that information based on the strengths that they're being tested on. That's where we need our teachers to really dig deep and look at how they can use that information to design your lesson. Taking that, IAV is really for curriculum, not so much for the students. They look at the assessment, and this is how I have to change my instruction to make sure I meet the needs of the students. So really driving that home is the important. And our coaches are a great help in doing that. So now we're going to talk about Tile. I will show you the data. It's the same information as I shared with you regarding elementary in terms of cover coding. So we will display them, leave them there. Just remind you again that this is data. On the left is twenty-twenty-three, on the right is twenty-twenty-four. This is for our English program. As a reminder, we did implement a new program last year, both in curriculum and service delivery. And this is the snapshot in time with students. This is our math data. Again, math is a struggle for middle school students in Connecticut and across the nation, and here in Montville as well. We recognize the need to immediately put some things in place, particularly eighth grade, based on that. Here, we're looking at percentage of students achieving. So again, did they meet their growth target as given by the state? It's a very rigorous target. And this is simply, did they meet it, yes or no? You can certainly see that many students in grade eight in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three have absenteeism. Here is the average, so students and the accountability index, there's credit being given to any amount of growth. Growth is going to carry, as I mentioned before, more weight on the accountability index than the actual achievement performance done on that day. So here, everybody's getting credit for being able to grow that day. We're now on math, which is showing Montville in the blue, the state percentage in the gray, and this is the percentage of students meeting the growth target. Did they meet or did not? Average percentage of growth target is the students, of all students experiencing growth. Here, we're looking at the percentage of students at level three. The state considers level three and four, which is the green and blue on the charts that I showed earlier as meeting or exceeding state expectations on standards for that grade level. And it's a comparison to how Montville is performing compared to this state. And this is in English language arts. This is the same slide as the previous one. However, this is looking at the math for our students in grades six through eight. So all students, one of the fun facts about middle school is every single student takes the summative assessment. And eighth-grade students also get to take the eighth-grade science summative. It's a very, very challenging assessment. And once again, just like in our elementary students, most of ours are performing at a level three, but you can see that we have worked to do with the other students. And I'm going to turn this over to...
We can speak to this slide. You know, I'll preface it, we're not satisfied with where our scores are. So I will talk about the things that we're doing to attack it. You know, we'll talk about the things that we've, in the last two years, that we've put into Tile that weren't at Tile before. So all the incredible change in our academic focus, I'll mention. But these are some of the highlights from this course. And I think that, you know, it's worth noting that that eighth-grade test, science test, the HSS test is a very challenging test. And our students are performing above state average with that. Our high-need students in math, science, and ELA are performing above state average, which is a testament because that's usually an area that students are lagging. So to see our students performing, our high-need students in particular, we're doing something right with that population, even though you see a lot of ret. You know, we do have students that come to us, and we are focused on growth. But we see some areas where we are doing well. On track, graduating high school, the state average was at eighty-nine. We were at a hundred last year. And the indicator with that is the standards that students are passing with their grades, but they're meeting the standards of work. So they're saying they're on track to do high school-level work and be successful to graduate in four years. Our PE scores are well above state average, and we're trending in the right direction. So, I mean, middle school is a different challenge than elementary school. When you think of the three elementary schools, you have those classes of maybe, you know, sixty or seventy kids. They all come together at the middle school. There's seven classes at the middle school per day, not just, you know, one teacher for the full day. And our schedule doesn't allow for, we have to be very creative with our interventions that we do. We do a ton of tier-one work, but then that tier-two work is something that doesn't really exist. And I want to credit Jess, as she's come on board, and our staff. They have embraced an immense amount of change. So I just want to go through some of the things that have changed in the last two years of Tile to focus on this. So, you know, I'm going to tell you all these great things that we're doing, but I know the proof is in the pudding. And we want to see the scores, you know, improving. We want to see them at state average and above. So there's, you know, frustration on all of our parts when we don't see that. But I can't say enough that our staff is talented, and they've embraced change. So, and change is hard for teachers, but let's just, I'll just riddle off some things that we've put in place the last two years. We switched to enter genius grouping for all middle schools, which is a middle school model. We changed our schedule to seven periods a day. We have now have a written curriculum across the board in all content areas. We spent all last year doing that. Prior to it, it was a patchwork of curriculum for teachers. It didn't exist. You couldn't go anywhere. A new teacher would come to the building, and they didn't have a set curriculum that they could access. We were doing things from previous years, and teachers were putting it together. We have a standard set curriculum, and our staff worked incredibly hard on that last year. We have a new, we have a new ELA program into literature, and a new math program into math, totally new curriculums. When we were searching for new curriculums last year, we spent a lot of time looking and drilling into the standards that the state is asking us, that we're testing on. And it aligned with the curriculums that, you know, our new curriculums are aligned with those standards, and the units are built around those. So we are now drilling down, you know, more strategically with those set standards. So, you know, some of the, you know, I'll go into some of our IAV work, but the IAVs, as Diane mentioned, are a big one. Our staff, our students were not taking those IAVs previously. Now we have an IAV scheduled for four content areas, not just ELA and math. We spread the wealth, social studies, the science are also doing those. And we do those three times a year. We collect the data. I know you can't see it, but this is an example of just one. We have our IAV meetings that our coaches are running per grade. So grade eight just took a math IAV on growth and similarity. What we did was with that strand, we saw how our students were doing. A hundred and thirty-one students were testing on it. They meet per grade level, they talk about what went well. But the next page is how are we targeting the areas of weakness? So what all the teachers are provided with, here are the items on that IAV that our students struggle with specifically. And then here are linked lesson plans from the state website and the Smart Balance website that teachers can go to and then put in place to help remediate and help work on those. That's not the only diagnostic testing that we put in place. Our teachers are doing iXL across the board in the content areas. So we have those as benchmarks. And then we're also doing DIBbles three times a year so we can track our student fluency and how they're doing throughout the year. So there's all this new data benchmarking that our students, that our teachers are tracking. They meet with PLCs regularly. We have a PLC meeting log that logs everything that they're talking about. And they're putting in strategies in place, and they're talking about what went well, what didn't go well with all their students. So those conversations are happening on a regular basis. That's the expectation that we have in place. And there's like incredible work. So, I mean, if someone comes and visits an IAV meeting, we're talking and drilling down with a specific standard. And then we're drilling with, here's how we can work to improve that. So now go back to your classes and work on that. We have coaches now in place at Tile for math and ELA. We create, we have math and ELA tutors that we put in place. Jess has worked incredibly hard putting SRBI in place, which didn't exist two years ago at Tile. So now we have tier-two strategies and protocols put in place for our media students, and this is pre-special ed. So before students are identified as special ed, we're trying to hit these students outside of just the regular classroom interventions that they may have. So that process is now in place. So there's just a lot of work that's going on. Our teacher evaluation system, our goals are all now on focused teacher goals right on academic growth, so they're tracking their students' academic growth over time. Because we're putting our weight into the growth of students. We want to see, you know, we get students come to us where they're at, and we want to see them grow. Some students may grow one band, and, you know, they went from level one to level two. We all want them to level, at level three and four. But it is incredibly difficult to move a student from a level one to level two. The work that goes into that is immense. So we celebrate that when we do have that because that means our students are progressive. So, you know, there's so many things in place that we're drilling down and we're working on. And, you know, we hope to see the fruits of that later. I mean, we're investing in that, and we're constantly changing. People that were educators here, they know teachers change is very hard. But our staff has embraced it, and they're working really well together on that. We have, the population of middle school is, I mean, it's a challenge. I mean, the behaviors are challenging. We see grade seven, grade eight, we see a lot of changes with our students. You know, this year alone, we have forty-eight new students enrolled in Tile since the month of August, which is an unprecedented number. Forty-eight new students to Tile Middle School that have moved into town. So our enrollment is going up. And I know that Diane spoke to this, and, you know, without identifying, but we've had students that have moved in that haven't been in formal school since grade two. We've had students that have come in that are EL students that are not literate in their own language. So we can't even put Google Translate on the screen for a student in their language because they don't understand that language. But they're tested in the spring. And, you know, and those kids, what I will say is, I mean, we have a culture and a climate, and I want to credit Jess with that as well, that has completely shifted at Tile. And, you know, students love being at Tile. Our discipline numbers are going down, which means we're spending more time on educating students. They haven't gone away. Discipline has cut away, but it's still a big part of our job. But it's all trending in the right direction. Our teachers are happy, they're working hard. So, you know, we, I hope to come back at this time next year and say, look at, look at all the growth that we have. But I'm also realistic, this doesn't happen overnight. And, you know, we have great students and great families. I mean, we are, but we have an immense amount of varying needs, and we're always trying to tackle that. So, you know, I'm proud of the fact that we've put in so many different interventions that should be in place. I mean, it's just good practice to have those in place. And some were in place, some got away from it. But these are in place, and they're being done with fidelity. And we have new curriculums in place. And we hope that that's the work that we see. And if we don't see the improvements in those areas, we have a talented staff that gets together with our leadership team and our coaches, and we talk about what can we do differently here? So there's a lot to be proud of, but there's a lot of work on at Tile. I mean, we're not where we want to be. And again, I'm not going, I'm not going to sit up here and say, you know, we're there. We're not. So we need to do a better job. But I do want to credit our staff, because I think that we are certainly moving in the right direction.
So Greg, can I ask, do you have like action milestone dates? Because you obviously are thinking very proactive. And I greatly appreciate everything you just said. Do you have milestone dates where you reevaluate yourself? So you know your dates and where you need to be?
I mean, of course, yeah. I mean, we have, so all of our benchmark testing is like the DIBbles. So it's done three times per year. So the beginning of the year is really important. All this diagnostic testing that we do, beginning of the year. The first IAV that we gave was early in trimester one. So the teachers can see, okay, regardless of what the scores were in fifth grade, they're, this is where they're at right now. So we are able to target that, and then the teachers adjust their instruction to meet where the students are. And the beginning of every school year, I think for all, every teacher, there is a reteaching period that takes place. There isn't just, we're going to pick up, you know, where we're supposed to leave off, and then we go. We, there is a reteaching period with it. So, you know, we have three trimesters. Within those trimesters, there is three to four different diagnostic testings that take place in each trimester. So, you know, I mean, we want to balance the testing team with kids too. We don't want to just constantly be giving the IAVs and then expect them in the spring. On this date, they're, a lot of them are, you know, they're middle school kids. They need to get energy out. They need to have activities where they're moving around the room and doing group work and workshop-type activities. So we try to balance it, but our teachers are getting more diagnostic data than they've ever gotten before. And they're having real conversations about what to do with that, which I think has gotten lost at times because this, you know, our schedule alone, seven periods is a quick day. They're forty-five-minute periods. So, you know, it all kind of moves quick. So we're devoting a lot of time to that in our grade-level leaders, that our coaches are leading that work, and they're individually working with it.
I like that. Real-time change is based on data. I like that. I like that a lot. Just be very proactive.
Greg, got a question?
Yeah.
And I apologize if I didn't hear you correctly. Those new students that came in, are they included in the data?
Not this year's data. They will be included. This year alone, I, last year, we had fifty, I think, we had around fifty or fifty-one new students to Tile for the entire year. So that's still a lot. I mean, when you think about class size, that's two classes, basically, of new students that came into Tile throughout different portions of the year. We saw a jump after the holiday break last year, and then those students come in. So, you know, they're not students that have received Montville education since they were in kindergarten. But they have to take that test in the spring, and their scores count. This year, for whatever reason, we've had forty-eight new students alone since August. So we're almost at the mark that we were for the entire last year. And I think there's just, I mean, there's a lot of factors for that. I mean, I think Montville's a desirable town to live in. For, we have people moving in from different states, different countries for work, for different reasons. And again, I mean, it's, it's a challenge. Anytime you get a new student and you're adjusting, it's a challenge. That's certainly not the reason, or the sole reason why your scores are where they're at. But I think it's worth noting. I mean, A, I think it's a great thing that our enrollment's going up. I think that's a good thing. And I, the feedback that we get from the families of the students that are new to Tile is very positive. I mean, they're very happy in the building. They're very happy with the school culture. They're impressed by the teaching staff. And they have activated very well socially to Tile. It's that academic piece that we're working on with all of our students.
Were some or all of these new students in our elementary schools?
No.
So do we have to notify the state of these children that just came into the district? Or are they, they just...
No, a lot of them just moved from a different, from a different, some moved from a different town, a different state. Some moved in from a different country.
But they'll be counted in the next session?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, we are now going to turn this over to some else.
All right. At the high school, we don't have quite as many data points as the elementary and middle school have. But we're going to start talking about some of our AP data. And I begged Andrea today to give me access to the PowerPoint so I can just kind of tweak it a little bit. So it just works best, works well in my mind. So it may not follow the same suit as some of the other presentations, but we'll give it a shot here. So really something we're proud of, and something we really want to start with is our AP data. As you can see in this first slide, from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, the total number of students enrolling in AP classes is continuing to climb. I did talk with our director... I did talk with our director of counseling today, or recently, in 2021, just the, the overall population was greater. I think that's why we saw a higher number there. And then something to also look at right here, if you look at the number of exams in 2024 is a hundred and sixty-three. And we only had ninety-six students. So it's really looking at students taking multiple AP exams. And then last thing I want to kind of just draw your attention to, our, is the last column, percentage of AP students scoring at three or higher is eighty-five percent. If we go to the next slide, you'll actually see the growth that kind of talks about the number of students excelling at a three or higher on the AP exams is just continually to grow each year. And this kind of work by our students and teachers really leads us into the next slide for the second year. I'm sorry. I had to change my slides. Sorry. Yep, for the second year in a row, we were awarded AP honor roll. Really what this kind of talks about are two things. It shows that we are a school that are committed to offering the AP opportunity to all students, not just the high-achieving students. And then having said that, it also shows that all of our students enrolled in AP courses are also excelling in AP courses. So for the second year in a row, we've achieved this AP honor roll. Okay, moving to SATs. This is our last year's junior class, this year's senior class. So they are all done with this process. What this really shows here, this, this doesn't really show us a whole lot this slide. I broke it down in the next few slides. However, this does look at our mean score of...
We, we can't see the numbers.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to talk quickly about it.
Thanks.
It really talks about the, the mean score of, of the, of both tests. So in reading and writing, our mean score is four eighty-seven compared to a four ninety-one to the state mean score. As Diane said, we're always kind of trying to reach that state benchmark. So we're slightly under with the mean score in reading and writing. And then in math, our mean score is four fifty-eight, slightly below the four seventy-one in the state. Like I said, I don't think this shows that much. The next slide shows a little bit more when we talk about kind of our students' performance here. So this, um, this slide talks about benchmark. And we have it broken up into a couple of different categories. So if you look at number one, our school have a total of a hundred and thirty-one test maker, test takers. We have twenty-three percent of that reaching benchmark on both math and ELA, or reading and writing, excuse me. And then we have thirty-four percent reaching benchmark on one of the two. Compared to the state, we are right on par with the state numbers as student, or as percentage of students reaching benchmarks on either one or two of the assessments. And kind of similar to what Greg said, we, we are not satisfied with these numbers. We'll talk a little bit about what we're doing to kind of continue to grow in our SAT data, specifically in math, but in reading and writing. We, we, again, we're not satisfied. We're looking to continue to grow. The next slide is a really kind of interesting slide that shows the, the work that our students are doing. So taking that same class this year, seniors, last year's eleventh grade, tenth, or eleventh grade test takers, we're able to track growth over PSATs in ninth grade, PSATs in tenth grades, and then PSAT, oh, I'm sorry, SAT in eleventh grade. And you see our kind of trajectory moving up. So we're charting growth using the PSAT data in nine, ten, and then ultimately the SAT data. We're projecting an upward growth, growth path. Sumative science, this is the NGSS. I think both Diane and Greg talked about how difficult this assessment is. And I'll just echo it in, we're, we're not performing to where we want to perform. Two year, two years ago, our junior class, the 2022, 2023, were our highest achievement of the three cohorts on this, on this graphic here. I think that, we don't, don't turn yet, Andrea, but I think that kind of leads us to what the next slide is gonna show us. The next slide doesn't really necessarily talk too much about data. But when we, we're talking, Ken and I, and talking with our director of counseling and our science teachers around these assessments, we're, we're, we're struggling with our students and their motivation to intrinsically do well on these assessments. We're struggling with our students finding value in these assessments. Our colleges aren't putting as much of an emphasis on the SATs as a method or as a tool to gain acceptance. The, the students that are exceeding on these SATs more than likely are aligned with those schools that are requiring higher SATs so they have the carrot, if you will, or they have the motivation to do it. But a lot of our test takers say to our counselors who are facilitating these tests, my college, the college I'm going to doesn't really care about SATs. So they have that mindset going into the test. Then we also have the NGSS assessment that really holds no weight on graduation, their scores in their science classes, or college acceptance. So our students are really struggling with the intrinsic motivation to really kind of attack these tests and perform on these tests. So, you know, Ken and I really talked this summer about how do we kind of build that level of intrinsic motivation? And we happened to, both of us were having to reading this book at the same time. We're actually, this is The Power of Positive Leadership. And we're running a book group with our, with our department chairs. And I'm Andrea, you can move to the next slide. And it kind of leads us to this point that we got from this book. The world measures leaders are education by results. And we're talking about a lot of results here today. However, and we always want to, we always want to measure the fruits of what we're working. But I think a byproduct of those fruits are nurturing the roots of the plant. So if we just get consumed with picking fruit, picking fruit, picking fruit, and not concerning ourselves with nourishing the roots, the tree or the plant is going to ultimately die. And we really got that kind of mentality from this book. And that's kind of the message in the work we're doing to try to nourish the roots of, of our practice in order to see fruits down the road. The next slide really talks about our Way of the Wolf, Work Ethic Matter, Work Ethic Matters, you know, campaign that we're working with the students. We meet with our students quarterly. And every, at the end of every quarterly assembly, Ken really takes the lead on this, ends with, remember, when you walk out of here, work ethics matter. And this really does a nice job with aligning it with our vision of the traits of the wolf and our vision of the graphic, or graduate. So it's all connected into that. And hopefully this will now build that level of intrinsic motivation for our students to success. And I think we've already seen some of the fruits of this message. If we go on to the next slide, the Way of the Wolf, the fruit, we're able to pull some data from our Next Generation Accountability Chart from last year. And I know you can read them, but from chronic absenteeism, four-year graduation rate, six-year graduation rate of our high-needs students, post-secondary readiness, physical fitness, and arts, art, arts access, we're either matching the state or exceeding the state in all of those categories. And a lot of that has to do with that intrinsic motivation, that work, that work ethic. And we're beginning to see the fruit in, in, in those areas. And then kind of going on to our next slide, we kind of talked a lot about the celebrations in there, just thinking about our next steps and what we're gonna kind of really do to address the, the gap from where we want to be with our performance data to where we are is we're in the process this year of revising and updating all curriculum throughout the building. We're going to make sure that we're including SAT and NGSS assessments across the board. I'm happy to report, by coincidence, the last couple of weeks, I did my teacher evaluations just coincidentally within the math department. And in every classroom I walked into, they had some sort of related SAT prep, warm-up activity, or exit card, or closure, or group work that students were really doing a nice job kind of getting that practice, getting that familiarity with the SAT knowledge. Continuing to grow and travel down the Vision of the Graduate journey. We've done a ton of work the last two years with the Vision of the Graduate. And it is our hopes to continue that work this year. And then next year, maybe not quite at this time, but a few months from now, we'll be able to present the first set of Vision of the Graduate data using the rubrics that were designed. So that will be, we'll have another data point, at least at the high school, that we could track our students' growth in the skills and dispositions in the Vision of the Graduate. So we're real excited with that work. I already kind of briefly touched on it, but our, our Way of the Wolf, work ethic, grade level assemblies, to kind of build that intrinsic motivation. And then lastly, kind of part of our next steps and part of our data collection, and we do see, if, if we're, we don't have to go back, but if we were to go back to that growth, charting the PSATs from nine, ten, and then the SATs, we're going to continue to offer PSATs to nine, ten, eleventh graders, use that data to kind of chart our growth and, and provide exposure to our students with these SAT-type testing and experiences. Any questions on that?
It seems like you're part of the, your intrinsic motivation. It sounds like you're going from pedagogy to angiology.
Yeah, I, I think we do. And I think it aligns nicely with the vision of the graduate. We're linking it to the vision of the graduate skill because just by continually, continuing to reinforce the importance of those skills, building those skills, it's only gonna add supplemental to the knowledge gained and support their execution on, on these assessments.
Well, they don't know what's in it for them.
They do.
They really, I, I think, and that's, that's what you're saying, I think, is, you know, you gotta motivate them, so what do they get for it?
Yeah, exactly.
Rob, I also think that science, I think students would try really hard on passing that science test. That science assessment probably doesn't follow the curriculum. And does it? Because I, I've seen those, I've seen those tests with the grade. I mean, had to read one to a student. And there's so much there.
Yeah.
And a lot of the kids are not exposed to every, you know, little piece of science. And it's not, they're grateful from, you know, kindergarten to fifth grade. And here in fifth grade, they're asking you crazy questions about science. They just, they don't know.
Yeah, and I think that's part of what our science department is doing when they're more looking at our curriculum revision and curriculum updates and try to ensure that as much of that information is covered so they have that, that level of exposure. But I think Greg also talked about it. Teachers by nature are resistant to change, which is not a good, it's good and bad. I don't know. But I think the work we're doing this year, hopefully, kind of getting that in the sense of nurturing the roots and growing our curriculum, hopefully we'll begin to see some of that.
You're absolutely right though with that science. Same thing in eighth grade. There are some things that they went over, some on seventh grade, but they're, now they're on the eighth grade test. So some things that they are not anywhere in the curriculum whatsoever. The teachers know it, they gave it a crash course before. But it's not, it doesn't, it's not the same impact. There's graded, there's graded math or geometry on there that students have never seen before. So it is, you're right, the test is, again, it's a snapshot.
Interesting to see if the new reading program too has articles. I mean, I heard all about George Washington and Abraham Lincoln. And Abraham Lincoln, you know, my granddaughter wanted to go buy a new one. All the way home. She never stopped talking all about it. So honest day, man, a honest day. But I'm wondering if there's a lot of science in there too? Because that's, that gives the kids exposure to these questions that they might see on the test that they didn't learn in the classroom. So I think the teachers are working really hard. I think the kids are working really hard. But it's that exposure piece.
But I also, once they have met their biology requirements all four years, they have the ability to branch out to electives that may not be directly connected to that test. But we want to offer those electives because that's an interest area of that, or for them, right? Because they may, because they may want to pursue that for next.
And aligned with all of the work we've done, building and generating these pathways for students to get them a smart exposure to potentially what they want to do beyond our, our, our.
Yeah, can I just share a few things? So Rob said he had like, like a few data points. I just wanted to say, we have almost zero. Two decimal data points, it just doesn't exist. If you have, you know, five kids in a grade level, one kid would obviously tweet all of it. Just a couple of things, that celebrations. We had seven potential students who could graduate last year. Six of them walked on the stage, earned the diploma. That seven student turns twenty-one in about a week and is still plugging away towards your high school diploma. So it's pretty remarkable. We look a lot at, if we're advancing kids, keeping them on track with credits to be graduation. There's a, there's a lot of data that kids in ninth grade, if they get credits, enough credits to become a sophomore, they're gonna stay on track to graduate. We had a hundred percent of our freshmen last year enough credits to move to be a sophomore. So we're really proud of that. You know, the thirty-two kids that we programmed for last year, again, the, I'll say this well, the, the most successful student that I ever get is a student who was outplaced and made enough growth to come to, to come back to come to Palmer. The other students I'm getting from, you know, are not so successful. So we're trying to rebuild, you know, their confidence and stuff in themselves. So we had thirty-two kids in our program last year. Of, of those thirty-two, every student made significant increase in attending school. We only had three kids who kind of like struggled to still come and like, you know, just weren't making any sort of growth with. And then our focus point, similar to what Rob was saying, we should, everything we're doing is trying to stay in line with the vision of a graduate, our skills and dispositions. We're really trying to create a culture where students and their families feel really good about their, their child coming to school. The student feels like they want to be there. I think we're making some big headway there. And then just a mentality that we treat social-emotional deficiencies like we treat academic deficiencies. So we're, you know, if a kid has a, a reading disability, we're very specific to how a student, you know, of elementary school or a teacher would be very specific there. We treat social-emotional deficits in that same way. We're trying to figure out how they can learn those skill sets. That's what we're, that's what's going on down the hill.
How often do you have students like Sophie, for instance, excelling the way she is to the point where she's wanting to go to the high school? Is that, wasn't her blue moon had to fade or?
No, well, so, well, let me, so years ago, Tim, we used to say, PCT meetings, and we used to say that our role, our honor was to get a student so they could kind of regulate themselves enough to come back to the high school. And we would promote that. We were, we were really trying to transition a student back to the high school. We shifted our mentality about ten years ago to be more truly alternative and more proud of the work we're doing in that building. And so our conversations now are, we've got a really viable alternative to MAFLE high school. If you want to experience a program that's a little different, a little different focus, a little smaller in nature, come on down and we'll do amazing things. And we want a student to stay. The only student that we ever talk about returning to the high school is if a student like Sophia tonight said, I, I, I want to go back. I want to see what it's like, then we're all open. Rob's got a whole and gorgeous terrific about that, about supporting students returning, but we, but so, we don't really promote it like we used to. But, you know, different, different mentality. I will say too, I just want to just compliment Rob a minute. He, he's invited me to that Foot Club of Power, Positive Leadership. And so I come out every two weeks to his department chair meetings. It's been invaluable to my development as a leadership, just being exposed to his crew and the conversations and the work that he's doing up here. Thank you.
I can't take all the credit. Ken is driving up the road. I picked a vote. I did pick a vote.
Angie, that is our presentation.
Thank you, Greg. Well, a lot of information.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, approval of the consent calendar, so move?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions, hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Budget report, Kathy please.
Sure you want this, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. State financial reports. I forwarded the state's letter to the accountants regarding the requirements to review the excess costs in the educational financial statement, reports for June 30th, 2024 by January 31st, 2025. Also left messages requesting that they contact me to confirm their schedule, other than providing information from, for the bank's confirmation and reviewing accounting processes, they have not reached out further. However, since I wrote this report, they have now given me a comprehensive list of items that we need to provide to them, so that they can start doing the audit, so they can comply with the timeframe, which is a good thing, because otherwise we'd be under penalty. I'm currently preparing the excess cost report, which is, needs to be submitted prior to December 1st, 2024. Retiree's health insurance transition, Anthem notified us that, that the retiree health insurance plans will no longer be offered as of January 1st, 2025. MDG, the board insurance consultant, conducted a request for proposal resulting into responses. Anthem proposed a Medicare Advantage plan comparable to the current plan, with no minimum enrollment requirements after negotiation, so that plan was selected due to the pricing and the network continuity. Informational sessions were held both in person and via webinar, to provide the participants with the information. The transition has been going smoothly, and I'd like to give special thanks to Melissa Almond for outstanding support throughout this process. Right now, over to project, Tile Roof Project Punch List developed by Willie, Al, and Al for the Tile Roof Project, identified minimal issues which are nearly resolved. Greenwood Industry has been highly responsive during this process, we anticipate requesting board approval to accept this process as complete in January. The town has set us up in the state's core system, enabling us to process our first progress payment for the tile roof. Additionally, I met with the town officials and the bond council to review cash flow for the HVAC grants and the high school athletic field project, and the town indicated they could support cash flow until spring, when a bond offering is anticipated to take place. HVAC project, the state has distributed a survey due by December 31st, 24, requesting updates to all HVAC projects, Al Chukinski will provide input for that survey. During our conversation today, outlined the, outlined the planned sequence for the bidding as follows, Oakdale first, Murphy Tile, High School, Mohegan, and then finally Palmer. He expects to receive the final drawing from RZ this week, which will allow the Oakdale project to go out to bid. Following this, the remaining projects will be staggered, the bids face no more than two than a couple of weeks apart, and Willie, along with the architect and the design engineer firm, has been conducting walk-throughs to ensure the plans are finalized and complete. High school track and football replacement, following the successful passage of reference on the high school track and football field replacement, a planning meeting was held with Rob Ells, Tim Dilwick, Willie Conotis, and to outline the next steps. It was decided to engage field turf slash classic turf to discuss the project goals and scope. This vendor was well regarded for the work on the high school tennis courts and has collaborated with the town on the camp athletic field project, and has completed similar work in Griswold, Waterford, and the Coast Guard Academy, bringing valuable expertise to the table. Field, field turf, classic turf is currently preparing a preliminary design and cost estimate to, expect it to be submitted in early December. They indicated the pricing will be presented in a detailed line item format, enabling a thorough review and prior, for prioritization within the budget. The vendor also confirmed their availability to complete the project in time for the fall season. To minimize disruption to the school program, we may be considering a request in a bid waiver leveraging the firms familiar, familiar, yeah, familiar with our facilities and their previously vetted qualifications. Scoreboard, the scoreboard project incurred in unanticipated cost increasing, crisis, adjusting the project cost from $31,000 to $38,000. This project was initially funded through the 2% account, the additional expenses are currently covered by the operating budget. A review will be determined whether to transfer the additional cost back to the 2% account as we monitor the budget throughout the fiscal year. Town research trap separator update, the advertisement for the bid will appear in this weekend's paper, a walk-through with potential vendors is scheduled for Tuesday, December 3rd, with bids middles due on Monday, December 16th, 2024. I'm going to take a break and see if there's any questions, Willie's also here, if there's questions to be asked on any of those items, and then I'll go on to the budget monitoring.
So the idea is football field and the track will be done? Did you guys correct?
Correct.
And I think they can get the football field done before fall.
That's what I was told, yep.
So where does that put the track?
Well, that, they'll be done in, together.
They can do the whole thing?
That's what they indicated.
One thing, though, we might just want to put on our radar, which is fine by us, we just maybe find an alternate location for graduation this year, because they're going to, they wouldn't want to start that work as early as possible. So sometime, at some point, potentially the last week of May, maybe even.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have to see what the pricing is.
Yeah, but that, that's one thing to take out.
Congratulations, yeah, for that, absolutely.
Are we allowed to ask the other schools, like Newland and, about when they did their fields, are we allowed to ask them? Of course they pay.
I, I think they have done a lot.
Yeah, we've done, Tim has all of that information, maybe not from Newland, but he has from Waterford, Griswold, and he has another school, Coast Guard, I think, he has a lot of information from them, and they were, they, the report he got specific, most recently from Griswold, it was seamless work, they were there every day, they met all their deadlines, they were very easy to work with, and if, I don't know if any, anyone's been up to the Griswold field, it is beautiful, it's something to be admired.
So is the track going to be official, C I A, keep track?
They're going to cost it both ways to see where it is, we don't know when the cost remedication will be, so I think they're going to take a look at it and see if they can, and see what they can give up to get that, so. Any other questions? Hearing none. Budget monitoring, wages and health insurance, still working on the projection for the current fiscal year. As of October 31st, expenditures for the wages only, we've liked it 20, 90 days of the school year, so we'd like a little bit more time going to go through. Special education tuition, projecting a potential shortfall, however due to the volatility of this count, which we've heard many times, this can shake, shift based on changing demographics, placements, and services that are, that may change throughout the fiscal year, so we'll keep an eye on it, but currently it is projecting that as shortfall. Regularity tuitions came in to align with the budget, assuming that there's none out there that I'm not aware of. Special education purchase services, again, the billing for the magnet school education service anticipates shortage due to the new students enrolling to acquire services and students that moved from Montville to the magnet schools. Legal fees is currently fully expended, with an approximate $11,300 remaining as a retainer. Based on this, I anticipate a shortfall, which would be attributed to the legal representation of the administrators' negotiation that was not factored into the budget. Special education matters, employment issues, and we just received a C H R O complaint, which carries a $10,000 deductible. Electricity account, as of October 31st, 24, expenditures are running $154,000 compared to $120,000 in '23. Remaining budget percentages decreased from 74,000, 74.4 to 67.23, resulting in 7% difference, which will be further required review for the next board meeting, because it could be some timing issues. I'm not sure of that public service fee is something that's impacting this, so I have to do a little bit more research on that.
Kathy, do you believe it?
I believe it's on our bill, just like everybody else's.
Because that's a percentage.
Yes, of use, yes.
That's a lot.
That was not by the court, so I'm going to take a look at that and see.
I know it's, it's hard to watch, you never know.
And we didn't know it was even being talked about, because the incoming judge was here, so. Any questions on those?
We know specifically why we have a shortfall, especially, I know it's a very volatile piece of our budget, do we know?
We have more kids being outplaced, and services have changed significantly, and we had some RMSS students that had tuitions for one-to-ones and whatnot, so services were part of the tuitions.
Did we not know this at the beginning?
Yeah, these are, these were kids that were not.
And legal, what do we do, we exhaust legal, what do we do?
Can I still go for a transfer?
Rarely mention legal, thank you.
This has been an extraordinary year, because, I mean, like I said, we, we did not anticipate using legal for the administrators, but.
We had very little on that track.
No, it was about $7,000, not a lot, right.
I was going to say, we were pretty quick on that.
But I'm not even anticipating, if we go up to the $10,000 potential, that's not really in, in much of this either, so I mean, it's just been a contentious year on special ed and whatnot, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Wow.
I asked for questions, any questions, sorry.
That's it, all right, no problem, all right, on to new business, consideration action to approve the 2023, 2024 annual report for submission to the mayor.
Yes, so each year we present the work that the administrative team and their staff, the Board of Education and Central Office team has completed in the previous school year, as it is aligned to the district vision goals and strategies, so that was uploaded for you to look at and will be presented to the mayor's office.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Going to that annual report? No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, hearing none, passes, thank you, board. Consideration action to approve the 2025, 2026 district calendar as recommended, superintendent?
Yes, so this calendar follows the Learn region, we're all a part of the Learn region, and they provide various superintendents with this suggested calendar, and most districts in this area do follow it pretty closely. Our Montville district changes suggested for the 25, 26 calendar year is the elimination of the three half professional development dates. Last year we discussed this was a goal, as it is inconvenient to families, and the lunch schedule creates problems at the secondary level, in particular, you're getting lunches at around, what, 9?
9:30, is it 9:20?
9:20. The change, it's important to note, the change will allow us to increase student instructional time, which is important, but not increase teachers' contracted, contracted days of 186. In comparison of professional days in the area, it was actually interesting, and we found we are with this elimination right in line with other districts, so we're not behind them. For example, in one district, they have five full days, we will be having six. In another district, they have full, three full days and five half days. And we will have two professional development days at the beginning of the year, as we've always had, and four throughout the year, which will be aligned with regional PD, where we all take it at the same time, and then time that meets our schedule.
All right. Do we have an action or a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Discussion of possible action to approve the proposed 2025 committee meeting dates, which will be policy, E and E, and communications, superintendent?
Yes, so as you know, we had these set up for the year, we often cancel a lot of these meetings, so we thought we would try something different, if we were able to take a look at it, and in consulting with Bob for E and E and Lisa for communication, we are thinking of for E and E, scheduling the calendar around the times that we would need to have the discussion of courses and things like that to be implemented at the high school. So we left three dates on there, and then for communication, which is very rarely held, except around budget time, and if you recall, typically we sit around the table and discuss what best works for us to have a budget workshop, which isn't necessarily in line with what we set for communication, we thought that we would need that and hold it for special meetings as necessary. The Board of Education calendar would remain the same, and policy will remain the same as well. We always have the option to cancel it maybe, but there is several policies that we're waiting for the language to be updated, from Shipman and Goodwin, we're moving from C to Shipman and Goodwin, and they are starting to trickle in now, so we'll be able to have a meeting on some of the changes such as.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed 2025 committee meeting dates.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, hearing none, thank you, board. All right, old business, Evan? How did I see? Okay, good. Committee liaison reports, policy, Tina, please.
We had our meeting this evening, and we continued our discussion and review of policy 5131, 51, the electronic devices, and I think Diane and Andrea put together the draft of the new policy, and we had our discussion about how we all pretty much agree that eliminating educational time for cell phone use was a better way to go. So what we're looking at is putting that policy out, probably January, I believe, we mentioned that we would put this new policy out, and we really like to see the data, particularly from high school and the middle school, just as a baseline, to see where we stand with violations of cell phone use. I personally, I hate to think that we have to get rid of cell phones, but this, I think, is a compromise for the students to say, you know, just don't have them in class. And I don't, was there another area?
No, I think, I think we all speak freely, more, but I think we all agree that education time can't be used for cell phones. Good part about it is that the data shows it is amiable to let them have their phones and during the day, let them have it, I mean, some schools are taking them out completely, so we'd like to see the data.
And I think your, your policy of putting them into the pouches was, is good, and it seems to be working for the most part, which is good to see, it's good to see that our students are willing to put up to use, so that they're, they don't have their phones in control. So I think we're looking at changing this policy for January, and hopefully to go on by December.
Education evaluation, no meeting. Communication committee, no meeting. Montville Education Foundation?
They did, I presume, meet this month, however, this was their meeting to make awards, and consequently yours truly is disinvited.
We had a regular business meeting last week, and I get a question for the board, would you like to have the executive director of Learn, Kate Erickson, come here and give a, a little presentation to what actually Learn is about? And if I get the consensus from all of them, normally, if I get the consensus, I will go ahead and invite her, when I see her Friday, to come and give a, you know, when she can, a little presentation to the board, you know, we spend about 15 minutes, but she's going to be very informative, and you'll literally get a good feeling of what Learn can do for the area, because we go over literally so much stuff at our board meetings, I would need the rest of the meeting to really tell you some of the stuff that is going on in Learn right now. I'd love to have her come up and really talk to the board. So if that's okay with everybody, I will go ahead and extend the invitation and have her contact Diane about the time setting it up.
We're all nodding our head, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Montville Youth Service Bureau, they met last Thursday, the big thing right now is the basket raffle, where they will be drawing those on Monday, that's their big fundraiser now, instead of the pancake breakfast and stuff. There'll be no meeting next month, normally that's our holiday party, so they, we decided to forego it in December, and we'll have a special meeting slash holiday party in January, things a little relaxed. Things are a little relaxed.
Thank you. Evan?
Last Thursday, the National Art Honor Society and Culinary Club had a joint primaries event. Customers would pay to figure out a bowl that NHS made and AHS made. Remember, painted, they could have soup and some bread, entire bread class, so that class was involved as well. Our plan was to have people put the soup in their bowls that they picked out, but due to the nature of high school students making the pottery, just like for safety reasons, we chose to just have it be converted. But still, the thought was nice, and I think it went well, although the turnout wasn't very good. And in retrospect, I, me and I think a lot of other people realized we should have publicized that lot more, gotten the turnout a lot better. It was really unfortunate because it was a really nice night for the students that were there and the people that did come. But that means that in the future, if we have events like this, we'll know to get the turnout better. Our poet laureate was also declared, and it was a very close between myself and Subriel Win, but I was ultimately the winner. The Arts Council also had an autumn poetry contest, with the winners being Jace Robinson, Hannah Suarez, and Marius Inez, who is actually a night school student. Their poems are posted on the Montville Arts Council website. The drama department's fall show is coming up. The show dates being the 12th, 13th, and 14th of December. Earlier this month, NHS went around Tio, a high school, and Fort Shantock, and picked up trash together between all those groups who got a lot of bags with the trash. And we know a group that went to Fort Shantock, picked up a corridor. The, in previous years, Ms. Grylls would do the venue and could like a top of family presence for them and stuff. She's, because she's no longer here, Mr. Richmond and Mrs. Buckley have kind of taken over, so that's, they are running the same thing now in her stead, so her, that tradition is kept alive through them.
Thank you. Principals, you talked a lot. Do you have anything else you'd like to share?
I'd like to share that we did our Veterans Day breakfast on November 8th. We had over 20 local veterans in our community come in. It was a really impactful event, something we're really proud of, the turnout. Our students really learned, again, the meaning of Veterans Day, not just making a day off of school, but to see over 20 community members in our school is great. And then our student council collected over 640 items that were donated today, picked up by Montville Social Services for the holidays. So as a school, over 600 items that were donated to our school community, our town community.
Very nice.
I got something real quick. In the hallway, the admin hallway here leading to the superintendent's office, we have, it's called our Wall of Honor. I'm not sure if you recognize, we had two new posters put up there today to just kind of recognize, you know, our diverse student population of our former graduates and the diverse roles they've taken beyond these walls. This was, I'm not sure if anyone was on the board when Ashley Sullivan was one of our student board reps. It was her sister who brought up the idea to me about creating this to celebrate diversity, celebrate our students, and it's really growing. And we had two new kind of inductions put up within the last couple of weeks, so we get a chance. And it's great because you, we're now noticing as the wall's growing, kids are stopping and paying attention and reading about these former students.
How are you picking this?
Just through, there's no real formal process. Just through my communication with our department chairs, when they bring up, you know, names or I run into people or I hear, hey, Nolani Gonzalez was the last one. She came and visited this past summer. She's a nurse. She did a lot of humanitarian work in different countries. And I said, oh, great, you're on the wall. So there's, there's no real formal process.
I have something, I agree. He's actually a physicist student, operated by Montville High School. He's now a top of instructor, and he's a wife, he's a top. Go on.
I would love to take that information again.
Oh, Anthony must be proud, huh?
Anthony's really proud, yes. And one of the things that keys to it is my ability to get that information. So there's a lot of people, but I, sometimes I don't have the ability to connect with them.
All right, information I had. Our scheduled meeting is December 17th. It's all in the past. Not had a December meeting. I guess we need to think about this a little bit. I think it's a nice new breather for all of us. It's holidays, see how it goes. Stay tuned. All right, reports. Assistant Superintendent, Hannah, please.
This month, we were able to further our support with staff with the implementation of the CKLA meeting program by providing in-depth professional development on November 5th for all teachers K to 5. And we also supported our special education staff with them working together to prioritize how to differentiate for the student population using this program. In effort to continually support our staff, I rolled out a CKLA implementation handbook for the district, which outlined expectations for teachers and administrators. It had things like pacing guides by grade level, non-negotiables, and electronic fidelity checklists for administrators to use during their classroom visits. This is to gain information about how the curriculum is being rolled out in the classrooms and the fidelity of the program. In line with that, I was able to visit every classroom in every single grade level during their reading block, for the entire reading block, to see the implementation in action and to gather information to support future decisions. And I plan on doing this throughout the year, hopefully December and January again. So that was a great experience.
Thank you. Superintendent?
As you know, we approved our evaluation plan, and the first step in that process is, for me, is to meet with all our leaders to discuss their growth plans collaboratively. And I have met with all principals. I had really good and engaging conversations. I'm very thrilled with the rigorous goals that they have set for themselves. Additionally, I have been observing classrooms with the principals and doing walkthroughs in all the buildings, and I have been visiting regularly, and I'm impressed with the learning that is taking place. And I received, well, Andrea and I both received really good news as the State Department of Education has let us know yesterday that our diversity plan was approved. We've waited a long time for that. So we're very happy and eager to begin our work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have already met with somebody from Learn. We've given and worked with our administrative team. The next step would be to work with Learn to create an equity statement and to build a community team so that we can look into other data points in regards to the equity and opportunities we're providing for all our students.
Thank you. Citizens comments? Citizens comments? Citizens comments, hearing none? More member comments, and we're going to start with you tonight, Evan.
I want to thank all the administrative who did a great job. Really happy with the kids' progress and, you know, everything keeps getting bigger and bigger. We just can't fit everything into 85 days, so. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your work of tonight. It was very interesting.
Rob?
You guys are doing a great job. Impressed all the time. And I've been doing this for a while. You guys are an impressive team. Thank you for your time and your dedication.
Carol?
Just want to say thank you to everybody. It was an impressive list of things that we are working on, and my hat is off to you for leading that work.
Honey?
Yeah, I just concur with what everyone said. I know that Diane promised that there would be a lot of data-driven work to improve performance, and we can see that tonight, and it's obviously a lot of work, so thank you.
Erica?
Nothing to add, except thank you all.
I will tell you, thank you very much also. You guys don't have an easy job dealing with kids every day. That's remarkable in itself. I appreciate it, and I think that the board, and we all appreciate your service to educating children. I got a couple of thoughts. One is, I had a conversation today with somebody that told me, you got to read this book called anxious generation. So I thought, well, okay, this doesn't work. And I thought, well, anxious generation's about social media and the child's growth. So I thought that was interesting. Not to go on a down though, but I just want to point out, I talked to the superintendent about it. We do an excellent job in Montville. It's obvious, every board meeting, every time we sit down, every time we have graduation, every time you guys talk. But what happened in Hartford, I don't know if you know what happened in Hartford. A young girl managed to get through the entire Hartford public school system. Got into UConn, and she's a litterer, which is unfortunate, most importantly, for the child, right? I just thought it was something very, I couldn't believe it when I read it. I thought, how does this happen in 2024? By no means do I think it would happen here, but it just goes to show that people do slip through the cracks. And we sometimes don't know it, and I'm not pointing a finger at Hartford, but boy, they got a lot of things to talk about. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Future agenda items. Okay. Couple of people have asked me if we could talk, let me rephrase that. Fire department chiefs have asked me if we could talk about EMT training as a half-year course at school. I know years ago, we had nursing, and I said I would bring it up in front of the board. The other question that was asked of me, I spoke to the superintendent about both of these prior to the meeting, is after-school sports, do we allow, you probably know this, Rob, do we allow children that are not here daily with us to come back from another educational venue and participate in sports?
Like if they're on a field trip, or what do you mean?
No, like, so it's a magnet.
Magnet school, like a magnet.
Magnet school, can they come and play for school?
They can play back as long as the school they are attending do not offer athletic programs. If they offer just one sport, it doesn't have to be exclusive, then they cannot play back. So, so like if I go to a tech school and they don't offer football, but they offer basketball, I can't come here and play football?
Regardless of what it is, it's just one sport?
Yeah, if you, if they offer any sports at all, you cannot play back.
I'll answer that question. All right.
That's what I have.
It did just change, right? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Salute.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
You too.